Thank you. And good morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. Thank you very much for being here. Before we begin the session today, I'd like to make a couple of announcements. So due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how to view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and Legal Intelligence prior to the hearing. It can also be found on phlcouncil.com. By now note that the hour has come, and the clerk will please call a roll to take attendance. And members that are in attendance, please say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the City of Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks. Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gattie.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in Philadelphia, present.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the City of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Prayers goes out to all of our young people who have been impacted by senseless gun bans.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues in to the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kendra Sanchez. Councilman Scola. Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to all. We've clearly established the form. So we're gonna get started. But to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Derek Brennan of Canaan Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Green. I would ask all members and guests, please bow your head for the invocation. Pastor, please proceed.
Let us pray. Ancient of days, you are eternal. Before we were in our mother's wombs and you were waiting for us to log in this morning. And so we ask that you would just grace this session with the help of your Holy Spirit. I bring not only my requests, but Lord, the prayers and petitions of each of these council persons, the citizens, as well as these guests. I ask that you pour out your spirit upon everyone who is an authority and all who have such a great responsibility. Lord, I ask that you would just give wisdom for fathers dealing with intractable challenges that are blessing our city on every side. Wisdom is the principal thing. Therefore, give wisdom and in all thy getting, get understanding. God, I pray for collegiality and humility. Lord, that our council persons and our mayor, Father, and all across the leadership of Philadelphia will be united together. Lord, you said in your word that if anyone wants to be great among you, that they should be servants of all. I pray for compassion, God, the most vulnerable, the housing and food insecure, the elderly, the children, the immigrant returning citizens, those who are recovering as well as overcoming. God, I pray for audacity and courage so that our city will be measured by equal opportunity and equal outcomes for all of her citizens. Vision is what will unite us as stakeholders. Lord, I pray for a multi-generation vision that outlives everyone on this call, that centuries from now, they will look back at this time and said, they lived the people who sought a vision to empower our city. And finally, God, I pray for their strength and their hope. Lord, each person on this session, we're all human with families and personal responsibilities. And God, it is not easy. But I hear your word that encourages each of us to not weary in well-doing. In due season, we will reap if we faint not. Thank you for hearing this prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. And thank you, Pastor, for your spiritual guidance this morning. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
And God bless.
Thank you. You too. So our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 20, 2022. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, January 20, 2022 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 20, 2022 stand approval in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And the Journal is approved. Just for the record, I see that Councilwoman Brooks is now present and obviously Councilman Scola. But just for the record, those two are now present. Thank you. Our next order of business is...
Can we look at the actual?
And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. And again, we have a Sunshine Act motion, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session. Second, Mr. President, I apologize.
It's okay. Just get you some water. Thank you, Councilwoman. And it has been moved in properly second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carried. And our next order of business is communication. And the clerk will please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession today.
From the mayor to the President and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2046 Martha Street located in the First Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the First Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the Fifth Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1707 Ridge Avenue located in the Fifth Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3625 Wallace Street located in the Third Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the Eighth Councilmatic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. For the record, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks so she could be noted as being a present.
Good morning, Council President. I would just want to be recognized as present for today's meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including previous resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment. I would like to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker offers one resolution on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to 1001 West Arizona Street, 1003 West Arizona Street, 1005 West Arizona Street, 1005 West Cumberland Street, 1007 West Arizona Street, 1009, 1011, 1013, and 1019 West Arizona Street, 1021 West Cumberland Street, 2325 North 10th Street, 2335 North 10th Street, 2337, 2346, 2347, and 2419 North 10th Street, 2440 North Deli Street, 2444 North Deli Street, 924 West York Street, 932 West York Street in the Fifth Councilmatic District.
Thank you. Sounds like a shovel, another shovel in the ground, Councilman Jones. That'll be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson offers three resolutions. And titled a resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its 30th Annual African-American Children's Book Fair.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing February 22 as Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing February 22 as Environmental Justice Month in the City of Philadelphia.
And next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers one bill entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Overbrook Avenue from 64th Street to 66th Street.
For the committee.
Councilman Johnson offers two resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing February 1 through 7, 2022 as National Gun Violence Survival Week in honor of survivors of gun violence and the lifelong burdens they carry.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring Penns Village for its work caring for Philadelphia's aging population and recognizing the 20th anniversary of the National Village Movement.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers five bills and three resolutions entitled an ordinance providing for submission to the Qualified Electors of the City of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council of an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to revise the age requirements to be eligible for election as city officials. And an ordinance amending Chapter 2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Standards of Conduct and Ethics to amend definitions further address to further address conflict of interest and related rules and revise disqualification and notification rules. And an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Officers and Employees to add a chapter establishing a system for public financing of political campaigns and to make other conforming changes. And an ordinance amending Chapter 21,000 of the Philadelphia Code, Political Contributions and Expenditures to add and make changes to provisions regarding campaign contributions and disclosure of political committee expenditures. And an ordinance providing for the submission to the Qualified Electors of the City of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council of an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for the creation of an office of Inspector General, the powers and duties of, and annual appropriations to such office to establish requirements for city officials, employees, contractors, and others in connection with the work of the Inspector General and otherwise provide for the incorporation of the Inspector General into the city government.
Those five bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And three resolutions. And titled a resolution recognizing the nomination of Arianna J. Freeman to the United States Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit and encouraging her confirmation by the United States Senate.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to age requirement to be eligible for a city, for election as city officers.
For the committee.
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for the creation of an office of Inspector General.
For the committee.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending Section 94116 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Health Emergency Leave to establish leave time for public health emergencies and modify existing provisions concerning the paid sick leave and make technical changes.
For the committee.
Councilman Dom offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring the legacy of Joseph Fox Bookshop located on Sansom Street upon its closure after over 70 years of business and recognizing its many contributions to the literary culture of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Today, we're honoring the legacy of the Joseph Fox Bookshop, a great contributor to the literary culture of Philadelphia. Joseph Fox, the founder, started selling books in 1951, 71 years ago. In 1990, Michael, his son, took over the running of the bookshop. But Fox Bookshop really prided itself on an excellent children's section, architectural section, and many others. It was a small mom-and-pop bookshop. Like if some of you remember that small little bookshop in the movie with Tom Hanks, You've Got Mail. In January of this year, Michael and his wife Judy announced the closing of the store. We'll miss this one-of-a-kind, small bookshop. The sad news is they're closing somewhat due to the market conditions. While the office buildings close, they've lost a lot of potential customers, and they're also going to retire. But the positive news is they had an amazing run. In 2020, when you look at the average lifespan of a business, a large business, according to Standard and Coors, it's 21 years. In fact, down from 32 years in 1965. But for a small business, the numbers are very different. The average lifespan of a small business is eight years. Fox was in business for 71 years and was the oldest bookstore in the City of Philadelphia. So I think we all want to offer our congratulations to Judy and Mike Fox and all the staff at Fox providing the city for a long time, what I would say, little gem. And Mike, all I can say is I know your dad would be very proud. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar.
That's okay. Councilman Thomas offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Tina Sloan-Green and I Cones Lacrosse Team for being the first Philadelphian and all-black team to participate in the World Lacrosse Tournament this year.
Okay. Next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neil offers two bills entitled an ordinance repealing Bill Number 210865 entitled an ordinance amending Section 14514 of the Philadelphia Code entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlake District to prohibit eligibility for floor area height and dwelling unit bonuses and to increase minimum parking requirements all under certain terms and conditions, and amending Section 14514 of the Philadelphia Code entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlake District to amend the height regulations applicable to the district.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Horning Road from Roosevelt Boulevard to its terminus further north-westwardly therefrom.
For the committee.
Councilman Scola offers two resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2046 Martha Street located in the First Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to 731 Mercy Street in the First Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 152 Logan Street located in the Eighth Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections and Chapter 194100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sugar, Sweet, and Beverage Tax by revising the effective date of the sugar, sweet, and beverage tax.
For the committee.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings on the findings and recommendations of the Philadelphia Fashion and Garment Industry Task Force.
Day's calendar.
No other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And we have no reports from committee today. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on our first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the resolutions and bills on a final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendars. They are resolution numbers 220011, 220014, 220015, 220016, 220017, 220018, 220019, 220020, 220021, 220022, 220023, and 220024.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the resolutions and consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling in bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the exception of the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, all other bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars are being held today.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we proceed, we're going to have our public comment session. So we consider the public comment session, and we're going to take a five-minute break to give our technology professionals an opportunity to connect our speakers today. We'll take a brief break. Thank you. Thank you, and good morning again. We're going to get started with our public comment session. So now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider our public comment session. A public comment must concern matters on a second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for your public comment. When you, when you call, you will take your name, your phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Today, you will have three minutes to speak. Because of the low volume, from time to time, we may adjust that based on the number of people that are speaking today. But in order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, we intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit and once invited to a meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are 30 seconds remain, remaining on your time, we will remind you of that. Once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitions comments are being made on the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for public comment at a meeting. And also, one last thing. Please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded. So because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in a meeting, you are considering it being recorded. Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the list.
The first speaker is Angela Reese commenting on 220011.
Good morning. Just state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
My name is Angela Reese, and I'm here to speak on Resolution 220011. Good morning, I'm Council President, Council Members in Philadelphia. I am a victorious and blessed 13-year survivor of metastatic carcinoma of the cervix who was paralyzed from the waist down for eight years from side effects of cervical cancer treatment. I give leadership to the Pennsylvania National Cervical Cancer Coalition Northwest Philadelphia Chapter and was featured with other chapter leaders on the New York Stock Exchange Board at Times Square during Closing Bell Ceremony last week for Cervical Cancer Awareness Month. I am the editor and publisher of the SurvivorDiva.com digital media resource for cervical cancer awareness and disability inclusion excellence advocacy, serving for the past three years on the leadership team of Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church Cancer Survivors, Supporters, and Caregivers Ministry. And I'm an active member of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women PA Chapter serving on the Health and Public Policy Committees. Thank you, my coalition sister, Councilwoman Sherrell Parker, for introducing this important resolution that I am providing testimony about today. I'm speaking on behalf of cervical cancer survivors such as myself, advocates and supporters, including Director of Policy and Legislation Survivor Rachel Meadows. My concerns are about stigma, resources, and access to preventative vaccination screening and effective treatment of precancerous conditions. I don't want anyone else to have to go through all I've endured and continue to go through fighting this disease and its debilitating risk, side effects for treatments. Next week, I'm about to undergo high-risk complex reconstruction of the pelvis and femur to repair complications caused by necrosis of the bones caused by radiation. And I hope that you vote for the National Cervical Cancer Month Resolution and keep the conversation going, not only in January, but all year long. Please visit the SurvivorDiva.com digital media resource for cervical cancer awareness and disability inclusion excellence advocacy for more information. And also, I was unsuccessful this year in receiving the official proclamation for Pennsylvania from Governor Tom Wolf along with other National Cervical Cancer Coalition chapters across the country. So let's do as much as we can locally here in Philadelphia, too. To get involved, please go to nccc-online.org and specify the Pennsylvania National Cervical Cancer Coalition Northwest Philadelphia Chapter. And thank you so, so much for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We really appreciate it today.
The final speaker for today is Peter Winslow commenting on 210956.
Good morning. Hello, my name is... Hello, my name is Peter Winslow. I'm a resident of Philadelphia. Thank you, President Clark and members of the city council for this opportunity to provide public comments in support of Bill Number 210956 as amended to establish the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority. And thank you, in particular, Councilmember Green and members of the Finance Committee for unanimously passing this bill from committee to city council. Establishing this authority is an investment in the future of Philadelphia, the prosperity of our residents, the welfare of our people, the fairness of our society. It's the right thing to do. It's the responsible thing to do. So what's the theory? How will it work? the theory? How will it work? What is the responsible as well as the right thing to do? What does the calculation look like on the back of a napkin? Well, suppose the city capitalizes the authority with a hundred million dollars by issuing a bond. The annual debt service for such borrowing could be around five million dollars per year. How do we justify the city taking on this obligation? Starting as revolving fund, the authority will use that money to unleash latent entrepreneurial energy, to help our local financial ecosystem identify and fill existing gaps in credit availability, to create new family-sustaining jobs, to build wealth and resiliency in our communities. The economic activity resulting from such investment will produce a regional multiplier effect as businesses hire employees, purchase inventories, and build their capacities. And as those activities ripple through the greater Philadelphia economy, approximately one and a half times, resulting in a hundred and fifty million dollars of new gross regional production of goods and services. Let's estimate the taxes and fees the city may expect to receive as a result of such economic activities. Business income and receipts taxes, wage taxes, earnings taxes, net profit taxes, amusement taxes, hotel taxes, liquor taxes, sale taxes, real estate taxes, and so on. Let's assume that will be around two percent. The city can therefore expect to receive around three million dollars. But the authority will attract additional capital from such sources as university endowments and foundations. When those funds equal the city's investment, the potential revenue for the city will double to six million dollars. At that point, the authority will be qualified to become a community development financial institution. And as a C D F I, the authority will be eligible to receive matching funds from the nine billion dollar federal C D F I fund operated by the Controller of the Currency. The potential revenue for the city will double again to twelve million dollars. Then the authority, uh, gives birth to a public bank with a bank charter from the Pennsylvania Department of Banking and Securities. Our lending activities can increase at a ten to one ratio. The potential revenue for the city will increase by a factor of ten to a hundred and twenty million dollars. So when thinking about establishing the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority and then providing the potential, please consider the potential for improving the fairness of credit availability, for increasing the amount of beneficial economic activity, for building the wealth within our communities, and for receiving more revenue for the city's treasury. For each hundred million dollars the city provides for the authority, the city treasurer can expect to receive about a hundred and twenty million dollars. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony today. We appreciate it. That all of the speakers, Mr. Decker.
That's all the speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda?
Resolution number two two zero zero one one entitled a resolution recognizing January as cervical cancer awareness month and commending the Pennsylvania National Cervical Cancer Coalition Northwest Philadelphia Chapter leader and the survivor diva Angela Reese for her work promoting awareness about cervical cancer. And resolution number two two zero zero one four entitled a resolution honoring and celebrating trailblazing writer, actor, and comedian Victor Brunson for her creation of Abbott Elementary, an innovative hilarious black and women-led sitcom that sheds light on the joy, struggle, dedication, and resilience of Philadelphia teachers and school communities. And resolution number two two zero zero one five entitled a resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends, Leon A. Williams Esquire, Michael Cord Esquire, Rashida Phillips Esquire, George Burrell Esquire, and Keir Bradford Gray Esquire, who are all respected.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Joe.
You're gonna have to take that off of the consent agenda. They deserve a separate vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That will be on the regular passage calendar.
Resolution number two two zero zero one six entitled a resolution also naming the sixty-three-hundred block of Lancaster Avenue as Absalom Jones Way to commemorate Reverend Absalom Jones and his legacy as an abolitionist clergyman and the founder of the African Episcopal Church of St. Thomas, the first African Episcopal Church in the United States. Resolution number two two zero zero one seven entitled a resolution honoring the life and legacy of comedy legend Bob Saget and Philadelphia native and Temple University graduate on the occasion of his passing. And resolution number two two zero zero one eight entitled a resolution honoring the life and legacy of music legend, activist, and Philadelphia native James Matume on the occasion of his passing. And resolution number two two zero zero one nine entitled a resolution calling on the United, the U S Senate to pass the John Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act and the Freedom to Vote Act. And resolution number two two zero zero two zero entitled a resolution confirming the appointment of Adara Al Combs as victim advocate. Resolution number two two zero zero two one entitled a resolution recognizing the Pennsylvania School for the Deaf on the two-hundredth anniversary of its founding. And resolution number two two zero zero two two entitled a resolution honoring the life of Jeff Barc Guarino, Chief Executive Officer of Visit Philly, who brought the city into the national spotlight as a dead destination for tourism and whose work championed the lives of L G B T Q plus individuals and welcomed all to Philadelphia. And resolution number two two zero zero two three entitled a resolution proclaiming May two, two thousand twenty-two is drawn Friday in the City of Philadelphia, where his contributions to Philadelphia and the L G B T Q community. And resolution number two two zero zero two four entitled a resolution recognizing and congratulation Chen Young on the occasion of their fifteenth year performing in Pennsylvania as the world's premier classical Chinese dance and music company.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second that each of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And the resolution on the consent agenda has been adopted. Mr. Decker, I think we have a resolution to read on the regular final passage calendar.
Resolution number two two zero zero one five entitled a resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends, Leon A. Williams Esquire, Michael Cord Esquire, Rashida Phillips Esquire, George Burrell Esquire, and Keir Bradford Gray Esquire, who are all respected distinguished leaders in the field of law as part of the commemoration of Black History Month, introduced by Councilman Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, uh, President Clark. I just wanted to pull it off of the consent agenda because I want us to ponder for a moment these, uh, great lawyers. And could you imagine them being a law firm, uh, Williams, uh, Cord, uh, Burrell, uh, Phillips, uh, as a law firm? I, I mean, it would be powerful. It would be fair. It would be the kind of law firm we, we could call Philadelphia lawyers. Um, so I'd like to defer, um, calling for the passage of this, uh, resolution and give it to my colleague, uh, Jamie Gudie, who may know one or two of those individuals. Can you call for the passage of this resolution, please, on my behalf?
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, what an honor. Thank you for recognizing my dad in such great, um, company with all of these wonderful lawyers. And I agree with you, that would be the baddest law firm in the city, in this nation. And I mean bad meaning good. So, um, with that, I call for the adoption of the resolution.
Second, Councilwoman Gautier, Mr. President said, when I mean, I say bad, I mean good. She sound like L L Cool J just now.
Thank you.
Is second?
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. And the baddest resolution has been approved. Thank you all very much. And that completes our calendar for today.
Uh, one more resolutions, President.
Yeah, one more. Sit back. I'm sorry.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities in the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings on the findings and recommendations of the Philadelphia Fashion and Garment Industry Task Force, introduced today by Councilman Oh.
All right, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Oh.
Thank you, Council President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on our passage.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And that now completes our calendar today. And prior to making members of the speeches, I will look for the record at the time. The chat feature available on Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, speeches on behalf of the minority, I thank Councilwoman Brooks. It's recognized.
Thank you, Council President. Um, today I introduce the third Public Health Emergency Leave Bill to ensure every Philadelphia worker has access to paid leave they need to keep themselves, their families, and their community safe. As with my two previous bills, um, which passed but later expired due to the sunset provision, the goal of this bill is to prevent prevent low-wage workers from feeling pressured to report to work sick and to keep businesses open safely and to reduce the spread of this highly contagious variant. After almost two years of the pandemic, I know we're all eager to return to normal life. But when restaurants have workers spreading COVID-19, to gas, when grocery stores have clerks that can't afford to stay home and quarantine, and when sanitation workers don't have the paid leave they need to care for their sick kids, that's not normal life. That's bad public health policy. And as we see federal paid leave legislation, like the provisions included in the Build Back Better agenda unable to pass, it is our responsibility as city officials to protect our constituents. And I want to recognize the co-sponsors of this bill. Councilmembers Bass, Gautier, Gilmore Richardson, Gem, Parker, Squilla, and Thomas for their strong support of Philadelphia workers. With COVID-19 cases surpassing record highs and some hospitals in the region still at capacity, we need to work together to continue finding ways to keep, keep Philadelphians safe, supported, and healthy. So I want to thank you, Council President, and thank you for the, uh, thank you to all my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. And on behalf of the minority, Chair recognizes Councilman Oh.
Thank you very much, Council President. Today I introduced a, uh, a, a bill to end the sweetened beverage tax in Philadelphia. Um, the bill would be effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, this controversial tax was called into further controversy with the conviction of Councilmember Bobby Heenan and John Dougherty. Uh, the evidence presented was that in part, the origin of this tax was vindictive and self-serving. It harms the, um, the lowest-income residents of our city. Uh, according to studies, it has not curtailed in any significant manner the consumption of su- of sweetened beverages. But, um, this, uh, tax and, um, how it came about, we cannot ignore the public concern, the doubt cast on it, and the challenge to our government. Uh, I believe it calls for immediate consideration of the termination of this tax. I fully support pre-K. I fully support rebuild. But, uh, taxing our poorest residents is not the way to fund these things. And in light of these convictions, I think this body is now challenged, uh, to terminate this tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Speech on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I'll be somewhat brief. Um, today I introduce a package of bills. I'm calling a civics legislative agenda. And that's really based on, uh, the concern based on last November's election of having, um, barely twenty-two percent turnout in our city. We know twenty twenty-two is gonna be a very important election. Uh, we're electing a new governor, uh, a new senator. Um, all of the state representatives are up in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and half our state senators. Uh, so look at different ideas and creative concepts like public incentive elections, um, look at ideas like ranked choice voting and some of the other aspects of the civics legislative agenda that will help to provide a better opportunity and more, uh, movement for citizens to be more engaged in, um, the civics of our city, our state, and our Commonwealth, um, civics, Commonwealth, and nation. I also just want to thank, um, uh, my pastor and my fraternity brother, Reverend Dr. Derek Brennan, uh, for this morning's prayer. Uh, his church, my church, Cannon Baptist Church Germantown, the gem of Germantown is located in Councilmember, uh, Cindy Bass's district. And his prayer this morning really talked about servant leadership. And servant leadership, from my perspective, will be really tested tomorrow. Uh, many people know I'm a very strong supporter of people with learning and physical differences. And so some months ago, I signed up to do the polar plunge as I always do. And I would thank Councilmember Brooks for her support. Did not realize that the polar plunge would be during a cold snap with a blizzard or hopefully not a blizzard, but snowstorm on the way. So tomorrow, like many other people, I will be freezing for a reason at one o'clock P M. at Citizen Bank Park. Uh, so I'm gonna really have to call on Pastor Brennan's prayer tomorrow as I'm freezing for a reason and trying to provide some servant leadership as we support Special Olympics of Southeast N P A. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. I bless you, brother. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Uh, today was designated by the United Nations General Assembly back in two thousand and five as International Holocaust Day. And today we remember the killing of six million Jews, two-thirds of Europe's Jewish population, and millions of others by the Nazi regime and its collaborators. Today's the seventy-seventh anniversary of the liberation of the Nazi concentration camps and the end of the Holocaust. On a personal note, I found out recently from one of my cousins, I always thought my grandfather was one of nine siblings, but he actually was one of thirteen siblings. He was the only one who came to the United States before World War One and actually had the honor of serving in World War One. And he was the only one who survived. The twelve siblings, his twelve siblings, their spouses, his parents, my great-grandparents, their children were all killed in concentration camps during World War Two. My grandfather gave me a postcard from one of his siblings from nineteen thirty-nine. It was his last contact with his family. I actually have it with me today as I remember International Holocaust Day. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Very, very tragic. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, before I give my initial remarks, I want to, uh, thank Councilman Dom for his remarks regarding International Holocaust Day. And I had the opportunity some time ago to visit the Holocaust Museum in Israel. It was a very, very eye-opening experience. It was also a very life-changing experience. And so I just want to acknowledge on the remarks that Councilman Dom mentioned because it's, it's something that's also near and true, true and dear to my heart just as a human being. And so, um, thank you, Councilman Dom. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues, um, for the exception of Councilman Oh and Councilman O'Neil for signing on a letter, um, to Governor Wolf, um, for funds for Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Gun Violence Intervention Initiative that we operating here in the City of Philadelphia. Um, Governor Wolf yesterday approved two million dollars for this program. Um, you know, my position has always been, there's no more important issue here to address in the City of Philadelphia, um, besides the issue of gun violence. Um, today, uh, my team will be out in the community in Southwest where we lost a young man to senseless gun violence, working with the principal at John Barcham High School, working with the parents of the students at John Barcham High School, but most importantly, working and encouraging those students who will feel a sense of trauma after seeing someone being murdered while they're getting out of school, after seeing a fellow classmate who they've known for the, for the time period of this young man attending John Barcham High School, life been taken away from him senselessly in front of other students. So, uh, I always believe that it has to be all hands on deck approach. I salute Councilman Curtis Jones, who I will be with today for dedicating his time. A lot of times people say, well, what is city council doing? And we don't see what's taking place on social media, but people have no idea that we are behind the scenes doing work, day in and day out, trying to address this issue. So Councilman Jones, I will definitely see you at one o'clock, um, to, to be supportive of the report that you put together with your team and making sure that this is the number one issue that we're addressing here in the City of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman Oh.
Yeah, I just wanted to say my apologies, Councilmember. Was not intentional. I was not aware of the letter, but I certainly salute your work that you have been doing all this time and appreciate what you do on this very critical issue.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Um, with that, um, that concludes these speeches on behalf of the majority and minority. And I now recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn. Councilman, you're on mute. Councilman, you on mute?
I hate when I do that. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February third, two thousand twenty two at ten A M.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February third, two thousand twenty two to A M. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. Thank you all very much and be safe. Thank you. God bless you.